I'm going to call to order the Town Council regular session. Tonight is January 29th and the time is 7:33. So, welcome, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neal.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of December 12th, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session from December 12th, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. And lastly, we have the closed executive session, December 12th, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Would any Town Council person request anything removed from the consent agenda?
Seeing none, and now I move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, 5-0-0, motion carries. Our licenses. We have a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Food for Thought, 577 Kingstown Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Christina Wilk, 85 Birchwood Drive, North Kingstown. And if you'd like to come to the microphone, welcome. And if you could tell us a little bit about Food for Thought, that would be great.
Sure. We are a health food store that was in Narragansett for 23 years before we expanded and moved to Wakefield a little over a year ago. And it was brought to our attention that in order to be open on holidays, which is convenient for a lot of shoppers when they're with their families after, you know, during a holiday weekend or what have you, there was a need for us to continue to be open. And so, we're here requesting that we're able to do that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Questions here at the table for Christina? We'll start with Polly, then Jim.
Yes. What kind of, will this be organic? Will it be all natural?
Yes, and yes.
Great, great.
Both items, yes.
Local?
We have food, yep. We have local poultry from Pat's Pasture in Jamestown, now moving to East Greenwich. We have organic, certified organic meats that are frozen. We have some fresh produce, and then we have a lot of boxed foods, skincare, and also supplements.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim?
Are you next to the post office?
We are, yes. Used to be casual kids.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
You're welcome.
Carol?
Where were you in Narragansett?
Mariner Square.
Oh.
Yep.
And how many days a week are you open?
Seven now.
And what are your hours?
Nine to seven, but we may be nine to six in the dead of winter, so we're getting close.
Very good.
Yep, okay.
Jim?
Do you make an exception for, do you carry roadie milk? Do you carry?
We don't currently carry roadie milk.
And I know it doesn't quite fall under the strict rules, but...
It's a possibility, under the local aspect.
Sometimes you need to wash down those berries and seeds, you know?
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, it's something to look into. We do carry organic milk, certified organic milk, but little roadie, you know, it's a possibility. Wouldn't rule it out.
Okay, thank you.
Carol?
So, how's business since you moved from Marinacarell?
It's good.
Yeah?
It's good, yeah.
Has it increased?
It has increased. Everything has increased, along with it.
So, your size is much larger?
The size is larger, so we have more staff to accommodate that, more product to sell, and we have more customers. So, it's all around good, but we're reestablishing ourselves. It's going to take a while before we're comfortable.
And how long have you been there?
A little over, it was a year in September, so, a year and a quarter.
Well, very good. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Having two members of my family, one a vegetarian and one a vegan, we have been a patron of yours forever.
Thank you.
And we recently had some relatives in with a baby from Hawaii, and we sent them to you for some special kind of sunscreen that does not have.
Chemicals.
But anyways, yeah.
Thank you.
So, can't say enough good things about, you know, your Food for Thought, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any further questions here at the table?
Good.
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, thank you.
Which brings us to, goodness, page three at the bottom, Communications D. We have a communication dated December 20th, 2011, from Nathan Barrington, Chief Kingston Fire District, requesting the council schedule a public hearing concerning the proposed Route 138 reconstruction project. Is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and I believe, Vin, you've got a meeting planned for January 17th with the Route 138 PAC, along with the two fire chiefs.
That's correct. We have a meeting a week from tomorrow in the chambers here, and we're, we sent out the notices today inclusive of Chief from the Union Fire District and Chief Barrington from Kingston, and among others. So, RIDOT and their consultants, BATE Engineering, will be there, and we're going to, as part of the review, you know, which has been, you know, the PAC was appointed in 2001 for the purposes of assisting the design of this project from a community perspective, and the, you know, it's nearing the completion of all the specifications and 100% plans, and looking to go forward probably not this calendar year, but the following calendar year after they get the environmental permits. But the concerns outlined by the fire chief will be specifically discussed at the meeting a week from tomorrow.
And what time is the meeting?
The meeting is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM here in this, in this space.
Do we have a motion in a second?
I move approval of Communications D. I move that we let them know we're having the meeting and that we've moved ahead on this.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, Vin. Brings us to item E. This is a resolution adopted December 19th, 2011 by the Charlestown Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to consider amending Rhode Island General Law 45-53, the Rhode Island Low and Moderate Income Housing Act, and establishing a temporary moratorium on for-profit applications under the act while a study commission researches. Is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
Well, we discussed this also at the work session, and I believe our discussion ended with referring this matter to our Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee. And so, we will place it on file, and my motion is to refer it to Affordable Housing.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, did Vin or Steve say that they were going to try to help us out with a little bit more information, exact information on this? It was difficult to, you know, divide between intent, where they were going with this, and what the problem was. So, Vin, what do you suggest here that we get at least some more information for the council members?
I had, at the direction of the manager, contacted the Charlestown Town Planner for some of the context of how they came up with their resolution, and provided some of that discussion in the memorandum dated 12/28, from, under my pen, to the manager. Also, I've talked to statewide planning, Director Kevin Flynn, and he indicated that his office felt that at least a review of the law based on, you know, the passage of time since its original inception in 2004 was probably a good thing, and he indicated as well that Rhode Island housing was amenable because circumstances certainly, and the economy and the housing market are quite different than they were when that, the law was passed some, several years ago. I do understand that statewide planning, at least based on my discussions with Mr. Flynn, is not of a view that a moratorium, that the legal criteria have met, or there's a necessity for that. But I think you will see something emerging this, you know, during perhaps this session, or at least to take a review of it. And I think the Affordable Housing Collaborative would be a good, a good venue to provide some specific feedback to the, for the Town Council's consideration in moving this forward.
But one of the major issues was on the comprehensive permit. That was one of the major questions.
Right, I think, I think that's the real reason Charlestown had put this together, because they have faced several for-profit applicants for comprehensive permits that they felt were, you know, difficult for their community to consider because of excess density and citing that they didn't feel was particularly appropriate. So, you know, they've had, I think they have four pending in front of them for more than 150 units, which is, you know, for Charlestown, that's...
Huge.
Well, for any community, that's a lot of units, but particularly for a smaller community like Charlestown, that's a big number.
Right. I also wanted to make sure that the council got the reply from Charlestown. It just didn't go to the Affordable Housing Group without us seeing.
Oh, no. What my envision would be that they have a memo of some sort go, you know, through, through me to the manager and then to the council before anything.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion?
We already motioned and seconded. That was further discussion.
Okay. So, ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you. Item F is a communication dated December 20th, 2011, from Laurie Fish, Chairman Economic Development Committee, concerning their proposed revisions to the Tax Exemption and Stabilization Program Guidance Statement, and requesting a joint work session with the Town Council to discuss their recommendations. Is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this during the work session, and we have decided on a date we hope will be agreeable to them. It's the 29th of January.
February.
February, excuse me.
February, 29th.
29th of February. So, I move that we send them that information and hold that meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and if they come back, if that's not good, other Wednesdays in that month, we can possibly look at. But Jim?
Yes, Steve, have there been any other applications since those first two from the doctor and the station?
No, there have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which now brings us to comments from interested citizens. So, I will start with the public. If anyone has any comments, if you could come to the microphone, please? Any comments here at the table? We won't make you go to the microphone.
Okay.
Only kidding.
I didn't want to set a new record tonight, so I thought I'd, um, let's see. This, I had maps given to everyone this evening that Dale produced for us on the redistricting. The 19-member commission has forwarded, I guess, their final plans for the two congressional districts, House seats, Senate seats, to the General Assembly. I don't know when the General Assembly will be taking this up, but I'm most concerned with the Senate plan that was approved by the commission and sent up there. And not specifically for most of South Kingstown, but the fact that our eastern flank, Tower Hill, Middle Bridge, has been lopped off and now is going to be combined, the recommendation is to combine that with Southern Narragansett, inland North Kingstown, around Route 1 and more westerly, I suppose, and then East Greenwich. And this is, this is absurd to me, and I also, you know, I'm a realist here when it comes to politics, but this is as disgusting as it gets. I understand the world of gerrymandering, but of all communities that have something similar, South Kingstown and Narragansett, Charlestown, and to just lop off our eastern flank, the Middle Bridge area, and just sayonara there to someone that does not have the same interests and concerns that we do here in our little elbow of Southern Rhode Island is beyond my imagination here. And the other thing that's most disturbing is I was at the high school auditorium and the commission came down here. Dale was there, I think Sue Sizniewski was there. And Proposal E was not on the table that night. None of the maps had E. It's Proposal E that you have in front of you tonight. None of this was here for that meeting. Many people spoke, so on and so forth. Now, all of a sudden, this is, you know, given birth. And this is crazy, and I'm not willing to stand side and see a chunk of South Kingstown. And right now, I think the, the only current person in office is up in East Greenwich. I think he's a Republican, but that's not the point. The point is that this crosses borders and municipalities and interests and concerns. This is nuts. And there were other plans, like the Senate District A, where Narragansett and southern part of South Kingstown, southern part of Charlestown, where we have much more in common, could have easily been adapted. And the other amazing thing is, given the population numbers, for every house seat, we're around 14,000 to 15,000 people. Narragansett could easily have a house seat. South Kingstown could have two. We're 29,000, 30,000. We could have two. We could have one, one senator, and maybe, as I mentioned earlier, that wraparound from Narragansett into Southern South Kingstown, Southern Charlestown. And this wouldn't affect or disturb anything around the state. Absolutely makes sense, and especially when this commission started with the legs. If you'll take a look at the state of Rhode Island, there are two legs, right and left, the torso and the head up there. And this is nuts when they started in Newport, and they could have started here, and we've got the perfect population groups. But I would like to, you know, two weeks from now, if we still have time, if we did not have time, I would love the council to say to Steve Alfred, like we did with the pension thing, send a letter saying, what, you know, what are you smoking up there that you would do this to us down here? And, but otherwise, if we can't do that, what can we do here resolution-wise to, you know, stop this mini train wreck? This is really disturbing. It's just so off-base and so wrong, and to sacrifice our friends on the other side of Route 1, Tower Hill Road, is absurd. And I think it's time that this commission and some of these people up at the General Assembly, we, I'm begging them to take a look at this. This is ridiculous and not necessary, but if this is a way, and I understand, again, I'm a realism, realistic person when it comes to politics and gerrymandering, but this is absolutely in our community interest to maintain Middle Bridge down here with our legislative group who understands our needs. Right now, the Narrow River, if this goes north, what's someone in East Greenwich going to be able to do on their behalf? What are they going to do on their behalf? So, there's some times here when this council has to stay up and say, step to the plate and say, basically, this is corrupt. Nothing short of corrupt. There's another C-word I'd like to use for it. But frankly, what you saw with David Cicilline, they're actually ordering, you know, ordering the votes they want in the next election. But this goes beyond anything reasonable down here. So, you know, I'd love to be able to put a resolution in. Last week, we were busy with our capital formation plans here. I didn't have time to do it. I just hope we're not too late on this. So, I don't know if the council would agree to at least have Steve get a letter out there that, hey, you know, the town of South Kingstown, you know, you know, next thing is Middle Bridge going to ask to be taxed in Narragansett tax rates and not here. You know, we can't lose a major part of this community, and especially, you know, we put the sewers in over there. Middle Bridge is a major part of South Kingstown, and this town has stepped to the, you know, plate when it comes to capital improvements over there, making that a healthy area with our sewers. Polly, you were involved with that years ago. This is crazy, and it has to stop, and what's going on at the state level has to stop. So, Ella, back in your hands, and that's why I had this distributed tonight.
So, you know, it's not on the agenda, so we can't get into a full-blown discussion here.
Right. What you have to do is, if you want to discuss this amongst yourselves tonight, you can, but you first have to vote to add to the agenda reapportionment proposal, so that you can at least discuss it, if that's what you want to do. So, I would ask that that motion be made before you go any further.
And so moved with that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0.
All right, so now you can discuss it. You can't vote on any action, but you certainly, if you can talk about what you can do, you can talk about going to the legislature yourself, et cetera.
While we're on that, Dale, do you have any idea when they might be discussing this at the General Assembly, is it first on their list, in the middle of things? Will it be heard till February, March? Do you have any idea of the timetable?
It was my understanding in discussions with the Secretary of State's Office and the Board of Elections that they were hopeful that the reapportionment legislation would be passed at least by the end of February in order to give the cities and towns time to do their redistricting. So, other than that, I really don't know, Jim. But I can, I'll try to find out for you.
So, we might have time for a resolution for the next meeting?
I, I believe so.
Because also, too, what I mind, since we're in discussion up here, I also had a chance to talk to some of the Narragansett Town Council folks. Their meeting just happens to be offsetting ours, it won't be till next week, but they have the same concerns. They really feel that they've been just cut adrift. The folks up in Providence are in the lifeboats, and down here in Southern Rhode Island, we're on the Titanic and sinking.
Carol?
Is there a map here, Jim, that shows what the districts are right now? Are these, these are the two proposals? Am I correct in this?
Correct.
All right, well, we need to see what it actually, it would be nice if we had the map of what it is currently.
The white outline, the white outline is the existing.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
Okay, that's the existing.
All right, so, I'm very confused as to what line means what, looking at this. So, I don't even feel I can really discuss it without a little more explanation.
We can talk about it the next meeting, which I think we can at least gather information.
But the piece you're talking about with Middle Bridge is in House District 33 on this map. Is that correct?
It's the Senate District.
Okay, so, let me take the next step. So, the House one, it's, it's in the same, it's in 33. But then, when you go to the Senate, it's been moved to 35. Is that, is that your, is that what you're?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, it's been taken out of 37.
Yep.
Okay. I just needed a little clarification on...
Right, right. The dark blue is going to be that next Senate district. You can see Southern Narragansett, you can see the Middle Bridge.
And it's been put in 35.
Yep.
That's what it looks like.
35.
So, it's up with what, North Kingstown, is that what?
North Kingstown, it goes all the way up, it sneaks all the way up in East Greenwich, which is off this map.
Hmm.
Before, before the Senate District was a little bit of North Kingstown and all of Narragansett. So, you can see how it's changed. But I just, you know, it's part of our community. So, if seceding is so easily done at the General Assembly, well, maybe we should think about secession now and then. But, but this is crazy.
I think we need further time to discuss it before we make anything, any rash decisions here tonight. I understand what happened in Narragansett. I can understand. And the Middle Bridge area does fall into that area. They did hire a consultant who was supposed to, you know, they paid a significant amount of money who's, supposedly, this is their, their profession, that tried to be as unbiased as possible trying to put this together. And I think a lot of it with the numbers and the census, that sometimes, you know, some areas are going to look a little bit unfair to other areas. Narragansett does seem to have, you know, some issues going on over there, but, you know, this part with the Middle Bridge, it's just that, it just kind of falls into that Narragansett quadrant. So, I think we need more time before we make any decisions on what we're going to write, and we need to just have more discussion about this.
Yeah, apparently...
A lot of what you're doing right now, but...
Apparently, there is a million and a half that's been set aside for that commission and the study. I don't know what the spend of that, but I'm trying to find it here in the newspaper. Newspaper reported that only three states, one of which, of course, is Rhode Island, did not take up the grant availability of the census state work offered by the feds. So, here's another reason that this whole thing is sickening. But I'm just not going to carve off, this is just so obvious, and if you've read the newspapers lately, I think, matter of fact, only one rep has spoken out that how weird this is. That was Representative Dickinson, who said that this is kind of crazy what has happened here. I don't know if he was directly referring to the Senate seat, but this is just wrong here. But we've had an opportunity to keep this independent. If you've read the newspapers, you've seen what's going on with District 1, District 2. Hey, you just shift 75,000 votes. Thank you, better than spending money for it. But anyway, this is absurd, and it's got to change.
There are other representatives in the paper who complained about their areas, too. It wasn't just one rep from down here. It was, it was several reps. And of course, you know, when you stop moving things around, people are going to get upset like that, so you have to take that out of the equation. I, I do understand, and I know that they've been, you know, arguing it for Narragansett, and I think that's what happened. I don't know if anybody's just trying to, you know, I don't think any of our reps are, certainly our senators, trying to get rid of that out of our, I don't think that's a bad political area, our area itself. I don't know if it's just a matter of sometimes it cuts to be like the numbers and trying to fit it in.
It's corruption.
Well...
That's how I refer to it. But also, too, I did not say there isn't one representative who's upset here. We have no one in those four towns involved with that. The current senator will be, well, he's in East Greenwich, he'll have to run for reelection. But in other words, of those four towns, Narragansett, Middle Bridge, North Kingstown, East Greenwich, we have nobody from down here. This is nuts. Nobody else has complained.
So, are we in full agreement that we would like further discussion of this at the next Town Council meeting?
Yes.
I just want to ask Jim one more question, because obviously, he has looked at this a lot. This pink area that's coming out of 37 and going to 38, is that, is that Mattoonick and Green Hill? Is that, what are we looking at here?
Well, I've only discussed the...
Maybe Dale could say it, tell us.
If Mattoonick, Green Hill, well, it's, some of Mattoonick is in 37. If you look, 37 comes down, and if you go, like, from Mattoonick Point down to Cards Pond Road, that is in 37, south of Cards Pond Road. That's all in Senate District 37. And then, rest of Mattoonick and Green Hill is in 38.
38.
With Westley and Charlestown.
Thank you. It's, it's hard to look at this and see what, what we're talking about, but...
Right, but the colors are, I mean, the colors tell you. That pink, you can see where Westley is more, you know, and they try to balance the population.
The colors tell you, but there's white lines, there's black lines, there's also red lines. I mean, trying to figure out what's what. That's all I'm trying to do.
No, and I understand, and the white lines are the old, but these colors are really quite specific. These are the new Senate, Proposal E. These are the new Senate. The green, you've got the pinks, blue, purple, orange, I mean, it's really, and the whites are the old.
Okay, so this will come back to our next meeting, which will provide us time, Jim, on the 23rd, okay?
Yep, thank you.
I just have a few announcements. Just want to thank all of the participants that participated in the Mary Coppin's Home Owner Association-sponsored, a meeting at Mattoonick Elementary School at 1 o'clock Runners Association-sponsored, a meeting at Mattoonik Elementary School at 1:00 on Saturday. And thank Steve for the wonderful presentation and the whole Mattoonik community. You could really sense the feel of true caring about their town and community. So thank you for it was a wonderful meeting. I don't know if you want to further comment. I'll move on. And we also have a joint town council, school committee meeting, our capital improvement plan number three, this Wednesday. And last but not least, we have, the town council will be attending the planning board meeting on January 24th. That is a date that we set aside for transfer development rights presentation that will be put on by Washington County Regional Planning. And then we will move to another part of the town chambers to have a town council goal-setting session. So, any further comments here at the table? With not, town manager's report, please.
I have nothing to add. I'll certainly answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Okay, Jim.
Well, maybe it would come from you, but I thought Saturday's meeting, and special thanks to the staff and Steve, the preparation was excellent. Very few questions remained after that meeting. And I would just ask for that one clarification, you know, the reclassification, which may be the wrong word here, but those twelve-hundred-some-odd-feet, Steve, if you could just address what we're man-made, historic, just for the folks at home, the press, just so we have that all understood, I'd appreciate it.
The question that I think is being asked is on the application that the town has filed for the reclassification for a portion of the beachfront. Right now, all of the land from Point Judith to Watch Hill is designated as a type-one water. As a type-one water, the, there are no man-made structures that are allowed to be constructed. The area is defined as a headland bluff, and there is no allowance for man-made structures. Obviously, many man-made structures existed in advance of the development of the Coastal Resource Management Program in 1972. But since that time and the development of their, if you will, zoning ordinance for the coastline, there has been no permits available for man-made structures. What the town has asked is that that portion of Mattoonik Beach Road, from the Mattoonik Trailer Association's property, down eleven parcels, which would take it essentially to about this point, it's thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-five feet on the map, for that to be reclassified as a man-made beach. The reclassification would not occur with changing from type-one to type-two water. What's been requested for consideration, which is in accord with a presentation made within the report prepared by the Coastal Resource Staff on April 20, April 10th of 2011, was that any reclassification that would occur should be considered as an amendment to the town's special area management plan, which is a special management district within the coastal program. That way, those eleven lots would still stay as type-one water, but under the special management plan, would be classified as a man-made shore. This would allow the property owners within that eleven-parcels delineated area, would provide them with the ability to prepare engineering plans that could eventually lead to riprap, mounded walls that could be constructed to be able to protect their existing properties. If that were done, it's also something that the town would be supportive of, because it would prevent the need for additional sheet pile installation along Mattoonik Beach Road. The first application that we'd applied for back on August 31st was the installation of two-hundred-and-two-feet of steel sheet pile that would be driven into the ground on the right-of-way of Mattoonik Beach Road to prevent further erosion and the potential loss of access across that road. So there's two separate applications. Both the reclassification and the request for the sheet pile are currently pending before the Coastal Resource Management Council. The next step in the process will be the establishment of public hearing dates for consideration of both of those applications. Whether they will both be heard on the same evening or whether they will be scheduled at separate times is yet to be determined. The town has provided a response to coastal this week, well, we will provide a response to coastal this week, on each of the letters of objection that were received on the sheet pile application. Once coastal staff has received that commentary from the town, they will then be preparing staff comments for the coastal council to review at the time that coastal council considers the scheduling of the public hearing on the assent requests that have been submitted. If that answers your question, or...
No, perfectly no. Excellent. And for those that didn't understand it, that's quite thorough and quite understandable. One question. Will there be another staff review? Will there be further staff questions? Or will we be going right to the full council or a sub-board of the council?
I think that's yet to be determined. We've, we're providing our responses. If there's additional information that's requested by staff, we will respond to that. But until we see the staff report, which hopefully will be prepared this month, I can't answer that.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to town solicitors' report.
Unless there are questions, I have nothing in particular this evening.
Jim?
Mike, it was in the newspaper, so don't give away anything confidentially here, but Village Liquors, um...
Oh, yeah. In terms of what's happening with that, yes.
So people at home will know.
Sure. The hearing officer set a briefing schedule. Village Liquors has to submit its brief on January 18th. The town responds by February 1st. They have another week in which to file a reply brief if they so desire. Once all the briefs have been filed, the hearing officer will decide whether or not he wants oral argument or whether or not he can just decide the matter on the briefs. Each of the other four Class A liquor license holders have intervened in the matter, and they will most likely be filing amicus, a friend of the court, briefs also. So that's the process that's unfolding. I would assume sometime by the middle of February, we'll know whether or not the hearing officer wants oral arguments on the briefs.
And that's totally up to the hearing officer, if he wants to hear it verbally or just will make a decision on the briefs presented.
He decided that it would be premature to actually have a hearing where he would take testimony, because there's this legal issue which needs to be decided first as to whether or not a fifth license actually exists. If a fifth license didn't exist, there'd be no need to have a hearing. He also opined that it may be that one side or the other, depending on his decision, might appeal the matter to Superior Court. And again, he said, while it's in this process determining the legal issue of the existence or nonexistence of the fifth license, it makes no sense to go through a hearing. And all the parties around the table agreed with that. So we'll get a decision from the hearing officer on that legal issue, and then we see where we go from there.
Does it stop if he says that there is no fifth license?
If he says there's no fifth license and there's no appeal to the Superior Court, it would stop.
Well, then, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Which then brings us to appointments. And we have one for our tree warden, if someone would like to make that motion.
I move that we reappoint William Wallace as the tree warden for the town of South Kingstown for the year 2012.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to new business item B. A resolution authorizing the extension of a ward of contract originally granted on June 9th, 2008, and extended on October 11th, 2011, to Feral Gas, 100 Money Hill Road, Chapachet, Rhode Island, for liquid propane maintenance service and associated materials according to the terms and conditions of the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement through March 31st, 2012, at the following price schedule. And it's listed and is further described in a memorandum from the financial controller to the town manager dated January 4th and entitled, "Recommendation for Ward of Propane."
This is a simple extension of three months of the existing master price agreement through the state.
I move approval of new business item B.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item C is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atlantic Control Systems Incorporated, PO Box 313, Exeter, Rhode Island, for the purchase and installation of a propane gas furnace in the amount not to exceed $8,140, including a contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the library director to the town manager dated January 4th, 2012, and entitled, "Bid Recommendation Furnace for the Robert Beverly Hale Library."
The libraries were successful in obtaining a $10,000 grant from Champlin Foundation for the replacement of the existing oil furnace at Robert Beverly Hale. Recommendation is for award to the lowest qualified contractor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
And further discussion? Jim?
No, just again, the Champlin Foundation and the work they've done for the libraries in this town throughout the state, just phenomenal. For, really, saved taxpayers a lot of money, but their generosity is just overwhelming.
And also kudos to our library, our libraries and town. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item D. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Martone Service Company Incorporated, 22 Sexton Lane, near Narragansett, Rhode Island, for the exterior window and door replacement project at the Public Services Office Building in amount not to exceed $87,800, including a $20,000 contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated January 5th, 2012, and entitled, "Bid Recommendation: Public Services Office Building Exterior Windows and Door Replacement Project."
Recommendation, again, is for award to the lowest qualified bidder that submitted. This is the replacement of all the windows and entry doors into the Public Services Office Building. This will also be paid through a grant program. This is one that we talked about at capital budget meetings from the Office of Energy Resources. The town has seventy, $273,000 available to commit to energy conservation efforts. That building is in serious need of replacement of the windows. It'll also give us an opportunity to be able to do insulation around some of those windows as well as to better outfit the doors to the building.
Great. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I move approval of new business item D.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. And we have new business item E. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Cox Communications, 9 JP Murphy Highway, West Walk, Rhode Island, for telecommunications services for a team of three years at the rate of $16.69 per line, including fees, 12 cents per minute for local usage and 2 cents per minute for long-distance for lines currently served by Cox, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Administrative Services to the Town Manager dated January 3rd, 2012, and entitled, "Bid Recommendation for Telecommunications Services."
Again, master price agreement for the services that will be rendered. We're looking at the reduction in cost being approximately 25% on what the line charges would be with Cox. As noted in the memo, we'll still be maintaining some Verizon lines for the redundancy that we need within the public safety building itself.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to the close of the meeting. Any further business here at the table? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:16.